It is now six thirty and we're in my comments. Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty five Select Board meeting at six thirty. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda, please?
No move, second.
Sokrea made the motion, Nico second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. The Citrus Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask that all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants in pretty marginalized and minoritized communities feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. And now the first agenda item is walk-in, so walk-in would be something that is not on the agenda. I don't see anyone here that would come and walk in, nor do I see anyone. So we are gonna go to the report of the town administrator, Jim.
Hate to him to miss it. Good evening. First, I want to thank PPW Police Fire for their work during the storm last couple of days. Although it wasn't that bad a storm, they were busy, but thanking them for all they do when it's time to get tough. First up, discussion Fall Town Meeting, Monday, November third, seven P M in Citrus High School Auditorium. Watch available on the town website, on the red banner, on the homepage, on the town clerk page. Treasure Collective wants to remind residents that second quarter FY twenty six real estate and personal property taxes are due on November third. Auctions International will soon be hosting another town surplus auction of various items this week. Link will be posted on the auction on the town website and on town Facebook as soon as it becomes available. You need to register to bid on the items, you go to auctionsinternational.com to register so you can bid on those items available. Post one forty four will again celebrate Veterans Day. Citrus Post one forty four will provide a free turkey luncheon. The help of the Voyage Restaurant, all Citrus veterans and one guest, extra guest at twenty dollars each. Need account of those attending by November seventh, so please see the email bobcallahan@recallahan@comcast.net or commander@citruspostonefortyfour.org. I'll call Jean at six one seven eight four two zero zero nine two. They would also like to know your branch of service and the year served reservations are limited to one hundred and thirty. On November eleventh, we will settle in Flagpole Citrus Senior Center at thirty three First Parish Road at ten forty five A M. At eleven A M, the ceremony will start with a rifle salute, playing a tap, singing the National Anthem and invocation by the Chaplain. The event will then move inside the back room of the Senior Center where POW and MIA remembrance will be done. There will be speeches by, by the guests, cash files available for beer wine and some liquor. The meal consists of salad, roast turkey stuffing, mashed potatoes, buttered up squash, cranberry sauce, gravy. Desserts provided by Post one forty four. Post one forty four's classic rock band will play sixties and seventies music after the mail. Once again, the Voyage Restaurant, Cameroun will be catering this event and donating the food. So thanks to the Voyage Restaurant and I'll keep no Callahan for doing this on annual basis. So please, it's a great event. If you're a veteran and you want to go, please get in touch early and make sure you make a reservation. First round disabilities will be holding their annual disabilities accessibility event this Saturday from ten A M to one P M. City High School Gymnasium. So residents, caregivers, friends and families. It's organized by the Citrusingham and Noel Commission on Disabilities. The Storm for Structure Improvement Project continues to secure and replace concrete pipe lining. Continue this week. We expect contractors to be working this week and next week on Hatherley Road, Citrus Ave. Finally, the Citrus Food Pantry continues to be grateful for your generous donations and that heat continues to grow. Most needed items, canned beans, canned spinach, jello pudding and pudding cups, pickles and all, microwave popcorn, canned subeans, canned salmon and clams. Herbal black teas and canned beef stew. We dropped off the Citrus Food Pantry during normal operating hours. The biz behind the Old Gate School, Citrus Library, Village Market and Shaw's possible collection for food. That was my quick update for the week. Not many questions, ma'am.
Any questions now? I have one question about the trucks that have been barreling down countryway from the new school. Is there any way we can get that monitored so they're going less than forty miles an hour and fifty mile an hour zone? Thank you.
Actually, Steve, I have a similar question, I'm about the same issue, but.
Done and done, huh? Well, if nothing else, alright, our first agenda item is twenty twenty six Annual Town Election, date of May thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Your mayor and town clerk to present.
Ploring back again.
Back again, it's not a good date, is it?
No. So what happened? So the other day, well, last week, I got the final date for the state primary from the state elections division, which is gonna be September first next year. And so I booked the gym. And I said, you know, I need to book the gym before too, it was set up, and he said, we said the gym before. So I did. And then I said, geez, dude, I booked it for the town election for the form night, so. So I booked it and I got rejected because of the graduation day. And they use the gym, they take the brand. So there's no what ifs. Well, if it doesn't rain, then we can use the gym, like, you can't, you have to, you know.
Maybe you will.
Unless you want to see the board members break down. So anyhow, going back to the drawing board, I did ask the school and I did book the gym for June fifth. Friday and June sixth to have the election on June sixth, if you love law, law, or whatever you agree. I'm assuming that the recent line graduation isn't the normal weekend of June third or sixth or June third or whatever that first full weekend is. It's probably because they moved the school date up. You know, I'm thinking that's what it was. I didn't ask. I mean, it is what it is and they're not gonna change the date of graduation. And that's fine, I get it, but I'm thinking that's probably. Yes, so that being said, I think it's best to move it to, in my opinion, to the sixth of June.
Yes, makes sense to me. Yeah, my only thing, I just have one thing, is to make sure that the schools don't have games that day.
Yeah.
Because the last election, I know it was a later game, but even if they have a four o'clock game, people are trying to go.
I already, I've already reached out to the main committee, so now I have to, must have decided.
Okay.
I will reach out to rec.
Okay, because that last election, that top two, that.
But, you know, they tell me that we're gonna use it to delay them a day, what will happen in part of the January nine, but they're gonna part of the January nine.
Well, even if that were become a complication, I think we can do a better job making sure that there are better measures regarding, I'll stick a checkpoint. Do you hear from, what do you hear from?
Yeah, I mean, I have just.
They need a schedule and a waiting.
They can work it out.
They can work it out. I just want to mention it just so that I can work it out.
Thank you.
But I appreciate you reaching out for them. So we have a month, I think, for the agreement, right?
Motion, motion, change the date of the twenty twenty six Annual Town Election to June sixth, twenty twenty six.
The second by Nico, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, there you go.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Hopefully you also need to live it in.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. Alright, next up is installation of Hatherley Road Utility Poles on four thirty four through four fifty one Hatherley Road. Mike Macillo, our director of I T and Sean McCarthy. And you're in super live here to talk about this.
Evening.
Alright.
It's a little unique. Typically, the national grid is before you to place the utility pole in a public way. Mike is investing in fiber optic loops throughout the town. And as you go by in the square, you're on, pole stop. And don't carry across the roadway. They go as, as far as what four thirty one on the, four fifty one on the north side. And four thirty four on the southern side. We have filed with the Conservation Commission. We're on the agenda for Monday evening. To discuss the installation of utility poles, press only five poles. And they can complete that fiber optic group in the northern section.
Okay, and we don't have, is this something that Conservation decides or we see a suggestion? Do we actually, we do, we don't vote on this, this is just an update? So this is like Conservation makes the decision?
Engineering makes the decision to put the poles in because they're top poles, they don't require a formal hearing with the, like the company does. As Sean was saying, it's a loop, so if we retrieve them down again, you can still get the connection.
Right.
Down the back way, so. You don't actually have to improve the placement of these poles. If you don't want us to put them in, tell us you don't want us to put them in. Where there's a vulnerability would have, we got a storm. We want to make sure we have two ways.
There's a steel crawl station.
Question I had was, I think I're gonna be answering, but to make sure I do. There are currently other poles, regular poles, national grid poles extending north and extending south from two points on the same western side of the road.
Correct.
So it's not changing, then relative to a few new sidewalks over there.
It'll be behind the air, yeah, that's fine. We'll have to stay in the public car.
That's the only question.
I don't see a question. I don't.
Hello.
I think that's a lot of questions. This is not a vote, it's just update on the utility poles on Hatherley Road for fiber optics. Great idea, presenting to Conservation. Thank you for the update.
Keep going. You good to keep going?
Yeah.
Keep going.
Alright, I was late.
You're gonna have to accept mine. Good timing, right?
Exactly.
Morganize that we're using except mine.
Nancy.
John has here, a lot of John.
Yeah, the first one is just to accept donation to the Citrus Veterans Advisory Council Fund. This was a donation made in memory of John Brand, for service that was two weeks ago. And little flowers, the family asked for donations to Citrus Veteran Services. This was what that donation was for, fifty dollar donation. Next, Cudworth.
We actually have the vote on, right?
Move that the Select Board accept the donation of fifty dollars and future memorial and donations for the Veterans Advisory Council Gift Fund for the benefit of veterans of the town of Citrus.
Second.
Go more second by Harrison Altiver. With the effect. Now we'll go to the policy updates.
Yeah, sorry for jumping on there. The Cudworth Cemetery policy has not been updated, hadn't been updated since two thousand sixteen. I worked on it the last few months with Karen Canfield before her time was done. Only major changes were three bullet points. As discussed. The first one with direct correlation to people being interred at Cudworth Cemetery, there is a fee, administration fee. Before it was a hundred dollars, whether it's buried on ground or in the columbarium. It actually costs the town Citrus, three hundred dollars to bury somebody in Cudworth Cemetery, so I made a change to reflect the town. Just breaking even, not making money or anything, but at least covering the cost of what it costs to bury somebody. So I changed it from one hundred to three hundred and then one hundred to one fifty for the columbarium, which again, to cover the man, our public grounds. That was the first bullet point. The second bullet point was in regards to who may be buried in Cudworth. We have a long paragraph, if you read it. I edited to say and or parent of a veteran who had no other family. In the unfortunate circumstance which has happened in Citrus of a young veteran, essentially eighteen to, you know, early twenties, never married, never had a family. You know, K I A most likely could have a parent buried with them, so I added that in there. That is, you know, we have things for, for children that can be buried with their parent, but this is a kind of a vice versa to go along with that. And then last was more just verbiage. There are extenuating circumstances that are already in the policy that the Select Board can vote on to have a veteran interred. The policy is typically twenty five years you are resident in Citrus. We had somebody who was twenty four years, the Select Board could vote on it. And I put in there that I would like to have at least the recommendation to the Select Board about any said extenuating circumstances before you vote. In many cases, there may not be a veteran on the Select Board, so I thought it might be important to at least have veteran input before that vote is cast. That's it, just those three bullet points, everything else is the same. And just wanted to give the policy current.
So I really, I think they're fine, and I think the only question I have is you're, you're updating the price to the current break even price. How long do we think that current break even price holds?
Well, that is a good question. Public grounds could probably speak that a little bit better than I could. Right now, the reason that is three hundred dollars is for the equipment that they rent to dig in the vault section, which is the expansion of Cudworth grounds several years ago. Currently, the town does not have that piece of equipment, as Miami Channing will maybe explain this to me. She said the company that they use, you know, doesn't seem like, yeah, I can't speak to that company if they ever change their prices, but yeah, two years, three years from now, they could change it, and if that is the case, we could always change the policy, but again, I think that was the case.
I think I'm okay with that concept in mind, and I, I guess I would ask, since my experience this week, it's domain. Can we set the policy to read that it'll cost what it costs the town? Supposed to a number that's gonna change two years from now?
You still need to give a rate to, to, to a client, they have to have a posted rate. It's like a chart. Well, that's when, when someone passes here to your rates, but.
I agree.
The idea of being able to revisit it a year from now or two years from now, whatever, it's fine.
Especially if you need one, you're revisited, this would be a simple change that we could do and again, I'd be in front of the village.
It wouldn't require you to go through all the homework you've done the last six months. That's, that's the, the time and effort. Policy is what I want to try to avoid.
That's a good idea.
That's fine. Thank you for doing my. It's all very simple.
It's straightforward.
Very straightforward.
Move that the Select Board vote to approve the recommended changes made by the Director of Veteran Services to the Cudworth Cemetery policy. One, parent, parent of a veteran may be interred in Cudworth Cemetery if the veteran had no other family. Two, Veteran Service Officer provides recommendation for extenuating circumstances scenarios to the Select Board when rendering decisions for veterans. And three, increase the administration fee for vault burials from one hundred to three hundred dollars. And for cremations from one hundred to one hundred and fifty dollars to cover costs incurred by public grounds.
I'll move by second, second if I'm slated. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And just a quick tip, if we're in the future, we may not worry about the cost anyway, there's only about forty five plots left around the football school, so we have to find another seventh. Columbarium has a lot of spots bidding around, only about forty five left, so. We ain't think about it, it's being. Thank you.
Thank you. Somewhere. Right.
Should we skip?
Yeah, let's see. So. Why don't you see the snow plow rates, Nancy? What do you think?
I like it.
Alright, so hold on, give us a half a second, finds.
What figure is that?
I'll tell you. Is. Hold the page.
Thirty.
Churting?
Thirty on my, yeah.
There it is.
Last time the snow plow and sanding rates were updated was for the two thousand two, two thousand, two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three season. We did do a survey of surrounding towns, if you have a near packet, found that we were lagging in most areas. And as you were unfortunately aware of, the signs that are in every town we go through. There is competition for, um, power contractors, which we wanted to bring our race into the competitive nature. So at least the towns that are adjacent to us will outbid us. So those are the recommendations you have in front of you. Largest increase of anything right now might be a ten wheel dump truck that went up twenty five dollars an hour, as well as the, uh, a loader with a ten foot plow. Figure equipment, they're having harder, um, time, having a harder time not securing, so that's why I wanted to make sure we were competitive for those bigger pieces of equipment. And of course, if we raise the rates, we will have no snow, which is what I want.
I like this. I like the Florida.
Of course, yeah, yes.
And this is often, you may have this in your vast knowledge of statistical data and numbers. What percentage of snow plowing is taking, cost is taken care of by our own people versus independent contractors?
Kevin Gilckoff is.
Ah, I didn't know you jumped. We weren't, we weren't paying attention.
What percentage of snow plowing and fanning is being done in general?
Uh, my dad would say thirty eight or twenty percent. That's just.
That's our townhouse.
We do, everybody in house is required, everybody in house is required to plow. We have water, we have sewer. I like a lot about that. Um, yeah, they clear. We do a lot of subcontracting in the bad storms, but in a lot of the storms, we handle them trying to ourselves.
Perfect, thank you.
So fifty percent are these rates? So what's the overall big change? Is there a overall number that would impact the budget based on what we typically sign?
Our, our budget is four hundred and ninety seven thousand one fifteen. It stays the same from year to year.
So by just the same rates, which has changed.
And we have been using the whole allocation of the, um, private contractors that we had.
So last year, we were very lucky. I think we only had to call them the contractors twice. The problem is it's competitive because we're going against Noel and we're going against Marshfield and Cohasset. So in order for us to attract people, we need to be up top our rates to match the rates that are, uh.
No, I completely get it. I just want to make sure. But if we haven't used it.
And hopefully Nancy didn't drink to us because if we get a bad year, there's a lot of snow, um, blaming Nancy.
No, it's like buying insurance. We just bought the insurance.
Have we done, you know, how much snow would take for us to break that bank with these new rates?
Um, storm island, okay. That went over seven hundred thousand dollars. A good, a good storm blizzard, at least a hundred thousand dollars.
It's about four thousand dollars an hour. Right now, we're fully, we have everybody deployed. It's like four grand an hour falling out, it's down. But it's not so much, how much snow comes down, how long it comes down, how long we have mountains. We start with a couple sanders and a ready to sand crew, we're bringing our plow crew, and if we're getting behind, we're bringing the contractors.
Well, I'm not at all, I'm not at all questioning how, how definite staff decide what to do, how to do it. I'm simply asking from a financial standpoint, at, at, at what number of hours does the new rate crush our budget versus the older?
I would say if you had three blizzards, you're probably gonna start skating boards running out of budget money, but we could probably take three blizzards.
And a lot of our money too is salt in what we've been doing. If we have a light winter, we'll fill up our salt shed the year before, so that we, you know, so that we keep ourselves balanced. If we have a really bad winter, we won't put a lot of salt.
But we have, Kevin has good salt news later on in the month.
Yes.
We're getting pepper too.
Okay.
Tahin.
My last.
Thank you.
I think it makes sense. I don't have any issues.
Four thousand hours.
I love that.
So this is, we got our, we got our big car Easter out this weekend, so we're gonna have.
That was a big car Easter.
It would be crippled if it was snow.
Go for it. I did, before we do the motion, you gotta tell people, please, now that we're doing this, if you've got that loader nine thirty, or you've got a ten wheel dump truck. Some of these, a hundred forty five dollars, a hundred seventy dollars, they're, they're really tough to get, so please, call if you want to.
Definitely give us a call, we'll, we'll put you to work.
There you go, get a cap though, hey, those. You know, some of these rates are pretty, are, are special money. For contractors. Alright, go for it.
Move to set the two thousand twenty five to two thousand twenty six, snow plowing candy rates pursuant to the past rate listing.
Second. Alright, move, move us a few more seconds. Nico, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you guys.
Alright. Quick aside, my first year, I voted against raising the rates. I've never regretted vote more when I realized how stupid that was.
Oh, really? You probably don't think we should talk rate.
It was some stuff.
Lost everybody.
Yeah, we love it, it's all your. Well, it was four to one, but I'm just saying, I learned my lesson, you want to make sure. Food for thought.
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
Wherever we going now? Keith, how are you? Now we're back to the fee schedule. What period which is?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. One second to pull that up. Alright, new, old and new fees.
Yes, um, we've not done a fee increase since, uh, two thousand eleven, fourteen years ago. Other towns are, and I don't know, you've got the spreadsheet running.
Yeah.
You can see the other towns, uh, we're just trying to catch up to the other town. And then we see a potential probably rates, uh, initial twenty thousand revenue, uh, these increases. And then this, this twenty, two thousand eleven, there's been a lot of changes in the fire code, which required more permitting. And, um, so we've, uh, we've added a few more categories as well. Uh, the new stuff is one of the new things, we've seen a lot of this, um, like the storage systems, which basically where your solar power goes. Solar panels and battery systems, so, and we're anticipating some more code changes from that, uh, we fire codes at least. Uh, we expect it in the next couple of months, which we've not seen a previous one, so. But I don't expect permitting to change. I think the, the volume of permits, we definitely increase, we see a lot of, uh, getting a lot of requests for that. In order to install battery system, we have to be appliance, we issue permit, we'll try to make sure. And in many cases, you, you've got to add more smoke detectors or heat detector, I think we are, we have some issues, so. But just generally, we just, uh, you know, nothing really significant. Um, we, we have added dumpsters, uh, we already did dumpsters, but we now, um, like, you may have heard some discussion of, um, some bylaw changes if we feel, uh, the side blocks. And the dumpsters are already in the fire code, so we think we'll just keep them in the fire code, there's a little bit more on. We will regulate that better, uh, better because we have the permit anyways. And these are dumpsters that are over six yards, and those are typical construction dumpsters. It won't impact the smaller business dumpsters, but ones, uh, things like that, these are a lot of your role, I guess, so. Yeah, you can see there's, um, nothing, uh, we just kind of broke down, um, uh, the smoke detector inspection, um, basically mirrors chapter one forty eight, so those are the limits we can charge. So that, and it's really quick, it's the one with, uh, the rest of the state.
Sure, yeah, so.
Um, I have a, there are two that decrease in fee, you're suggesting. One, the tank truck inspections went from seventy five to fifty, and I get that one because, maybe because all the other neighboring towns are at fifty. But then the other one was, uh. Yeah, um, waste oil went down from thirty to twenty five. waste oil went down from thirty to twenty-five, but all the other towns are fifty. So I don't, why, why are we going from thirty to twenty-five if all the other towns are fifty?
Um.
It's mine.
Well, fine, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Well, blasting, local virtual.
Matthew Tybo.
Waste oil, flammable liquid storage, flammable liquid storage, thirty dollars is the old fee. Twenty-five is new fee. We yearly renew, Morewell, Marshfield, and Rockland are all at fifty.
Yeah, that's because we went to a yearly renewal versus, well, a lot of the permits we issued were for, um, lifetime. Uh, and we want to, we want to get out and inspect these, so, um, it's gone down because we're gonna charge that amount annually versus, um, just a debt one-time.
Okay, and the other towns are, are a lifetime?
Um. It's likely, but I'm not sure, that it's, it's done, that's usually done, um, under the local authority, which is the fire department. We'll, we decide whether, how often we should inspect. But a lot of it's based on recommendations, um, on the NFPA, how often should we inspect.
Okay, and those are not yearly, with fifty dollars.
Yeah, so an example of propane, uh, if you were to put in a generator, um, propane tank, it's fifty dollars and that's, um, that's one-time. Where if you were selling propane, say you, uh, a lot of the convenience stores, at the, uh, Blue Rhino, where you can swap open propane, propane tanks. And we've got a couple of, I know we built propane at one location in Harbor. And those are, those are locations that are gonna be inspected here.
Okay, all right.
For safety reasons.
If you're not inspecting the residential, it's supposed to put it in Europe. That's, just the storage.
No, no, I understand.
Doors at the end, right?
Hey, just as a, just as a footnote, once you, uh, for a regular gas grill, according to the, um, according to the, um, the mask, the fire code, um, you use at more than three propane tanks. You technically require, if the gas grill's hot, point you on, right? The limit's four, you allow it to.
Yeah, a lot, yeah.
Forty-two pounds. This would be a third tank that triggers the, um.
Somebody liking a lot of barbecue.
Yeah.
Oh, or the tear tanks too.
We have.
Yeah, I, I remember. Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of propane, true, there are a lot of.
There's a lot of propane.
Small fire pit pits, boiling heaters, so, and some of the home generators will run on propane as well, a lot of the small. Yeah. Probably come by propane, you know, with, it was still, it's kind of.
Actually, there's a bunch of. Bastions, conserves, all that's.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah. So I'm, they actually had a DoorDash fee of like thirty dollars for delivery fee, twenty-five dollar fee, it's to get propane. Today's day, come on.
Yeah, yeah.
Move to approve the central fire department fee schedule as proposed at the October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five select board meeting.
Thank you.
Move to second by, uh, who are you, by person, all in favor?
Aye.
Niko. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. So leave my son Cory.
Yeah, sure.
By the way, this is, I, this, did you do the spot points really good or no? You can say good.
Sorry, I saw it?
I can't stand my mouth.
Oh, okay.
That's what, that would be an ask, I'm sorry.
No, we need to act surprised.
We're gonna act surprised.
I only have one and a.
Is there someone else?
Yeah.
Or Allison, or?
Yes, yeah.
She's not like. Who's yours? Oh, yeah, I see her.
Hi, everyone. I'm here.
Yeah, so Al, so do you all, you remember, uh, Allison Varonelli? She's, uh, Collins Engineers. She's been the, the primary engineer, uh, private engineer, uh, for their team. So, um, basically, we've tasked them with coming up with a solution for our little flooding problem down at Coal Parkway. And, um, they've come up with some conceptual designs, which they will present to us now. And then the committee's kind of next steps, go through these conceptual designs, rank them according to what the, what the, um, committee feels is the most appropriate one. And then we'll recommend that, that design to, to be forward. And Sherry's a, Sherry's part of the movie, so.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you can find it. No, all right.
I'm a fan of my viewers. All right, so, um, Ally, can you share?
Yeah, and Ally and Cory, should I? I feel, I've seen a little of this, but I feel hopeful for the first time that this is gonna, I love some of these ideas. I actually think the art of impossible for some of them is pretty good, so I guess, can't wait to go through them.
Good, well, we love to hear it. Um, all right, I'm trying to share a screen. Let me know if everyone can see that.
Yep.
Yes.
Perfect, awesome. Well, as Cory said, my name is Allison Varonelli. Um, I'm a project manager at Collins Engineers and, um, we're the lead designer for the Coal Parkway Resilient Design and Engineering Project. Um, we have been working with not only Cory, but a couple other consulting firms, both Woods Hole Group and BSC Group. Um, and I know we joined a select board meeting, I think it was a, almost a year ago now. Um, but just kind of wanted to quickly give an overview, you know, the purpose of this project is first and foremost, a coastal resilience project. So, you know, trying to address some of the flooding that we've seen at Coal Parkway, um, both in, from the harbor and then also that comes bubbling up through the catch basins. But in addition to that, we're looking to try to really enhance the site, um, to make it more of a pedestrian-oriented, um, you know, amenity for the town, as well as trying to enhance parking wherever we can, create more green space. Um, so a lot of goals that we've been able to hopefully achieve with this project. Um, so since the last meeting, I just wanted to recap kind of the main design progression that we've had with the project. Um, so starting off, we opted to go for a lower design flood elevation. And what that term means, um, is essentially that's the, that's the elevation that we're going to be protecting Coal Parkway from in terms of a coastal storm scenario. Um, so there's different, you know, water elevations that different storms have. And when we had first presented about a year ago at this project, um, we opted to go for a pretty significant storm scenario that was recommended by the state. Um, but given some of the flanking concerns we saw at the site, which is relating to how low-lying Situate Harbor is, um, what we came to find out is essentially no matter how high we were to construct a wall, it really would only provide a certain level of protection because water would flow into Coal Parkway from the north, the west, the south, just given how low-lying some of the elevations are at those, um, locations. And I'll get into that a little bit more on the next slide. But the second big change that we did, which isn't necessarily under this contract, but it is, um, you know, an important part of this project, is that we are looking into expanding the footprint of Coal Parkway, our study area. So we're looking into the north, all the way up by the town pier, um, Mill Wharf Restaurant, Old Dock Street. We're looking down at the wetland, um, just south of Satuat Brook. So these are some of the primary problem areas that we saw water coming into our site through, um, that we want to take a look at to see if, you know, if we were to extend the flood protection structure around a larger portion of the harbor, could it provide additional benefit and could we provide more protection for the downtown district, um, if we were to incorporate these other areas? So now that we've got these, you know, different design flood elevations, we've gone and revised our conceptual alternative designs, which I'll share today. Um, and then we also had a public engagement effort, which went really, really well. We were able to get a lot of great feedback from the local community, um, and we're really able to understand what their priorities were. So I wanted to talk about some of the coastal flood pathways, um, just because this is a key driving factor in terms of how the project has been progressing. So there's a lot of information on this slide. I'm gonna hopefully simplify it for you. But originally, we had proposed the design flood elevation. And remember, that's, that's what elevation we would be bringing this, at the edge of the harbor up to, to provide protection against a storm scenario. So we were protecting against a twenty-seventy, one-hundred-year storm event. So this is a storm that statistically happens once every one hundred years. And that takes into account the sea level rise that we would see in twenty-seventy. So what this black line is all around the perimeter of the site is essentially where our flood protection structure would go. So that's, that's like the limit of where our site starts and ends. So you can tell that, you know, we're really not touching anything further to the west or the north or the south. Um, and what these red dots are, are essentially elevations all across the site. So keep in mind that Coal Parkway is shaped almost like a bowl. So we have low-lying points towards the middle of the parking lot in, you know, this area. But as we look at other portions of the site, the boat ramp is only about elevation six-point-nine. Um, up near Old Dock Street, that's only about six-point-five. So these are already low-lying areas. And, um, you know, if we were to install our flood protection at elevation twelve, it would be a pretty significant increase. But again, that would be ineffective as a standalone project. Some of the other elevations that you see surrounding our site that are outside of the limits, you know, looking to the north, we have elevation eight-point-seven and nine-point-five. To the south, we have nine-point-two. Um, these are areas where even if we were to raise this black line up to that elevation twelve, and that's, that's referencing a vertical datum, so, um, it's not like a twelve-foot-high barrier that we would be putting in, but that's just the elevation of, um, of the barrier. So even if we were to raise that up, we would still have water coming into our site because this is only at elevation nine-point-two and that's outside the footprint. So what we decided to do is we looked into lowering our design flood elevation. So essentially, we would accept a higher level of risk and only design to a lower storm scenario in order to, you know, have more cost effectiveness and reduce the redundancy in our design. There's no point in raising it up to elevation twelve if water's gonna flow into the site where these, you know, blue arrows are showing. If it's gonna blow or flow into the site when the elevations around the site are a lot lower than that. So by choosing elevation nine, that essentially matches the, the elevation of the seawall along the eastern side of the site. And it's basically bringing the rest of Coal Parkway up to match that elevation. And with that, we still have some coastal protection. We're still gonna be resilient against a, a ten-year storm scenario that we'd see in twenty-thirty or a one-year storm event that we'd see in twenty-fifty. But it's just not gonna be as robust of a design as what we had originally anticipated. Um, and it's gonna be, you know, not nearly as significant in terms of cost. So I want to share what some of the proposed designs are, um, keeping this in mind. I'm gonna show a couple of, um, engineering plans and then we've got some 3D renderings that we're gonna show as well, which will hopefully give a little bit more perspective and be, um, a little bit easier to understand. So I'm gonna summarize some of the key improvements. This isn't everything, just given the time constraint, but some of the big picture items. Um, so starting off, we're proposing to raise the parking lot up to about elevation eight and a half or so. Um, right now, Coal Parkway, it's, at its lowest point, it's about elevation six. Otherwise, it's usually around elevation seven. So it's not a ton of fill that we're bringing in, but it is enough to be able to allow us to bring, raise up some of the catch basins and drainage infrastructure that we see at the site. Um, and that will help with some of the backflow issues that we've seen with some of the coastal floodwaters coming through during those high-tide scenarios that sort of bubbles up through the parking lot. So by raising, um, the grade of the parking lot, we'll be able to combat some of those adverse effects. And this is, you know, the raising of the parking lot, that's gonna be consistent across all the alternatives that I'm gonna show today. Um, in addition to that, at the southern portion of the site, in purple, um, the purple lines represent all sidewalk improvements. You can see we've got some on the western side, the northern side. But on the southern side of the site, we're proposing to raise the parking, or the sidewalk up, um, to that elevation nine. So that will serve as coastal flood protection and also provide, um, some flooding protection for the southern portion of the parking lot here. We're gonna be resurfacing the boat ramp and grading that up to try to fix some of the pavement concerns that we've seen there. Um, and on this alternative, we're actually expanding parking across the, the park, the, the parking lot. Um, so we've got a few additional spaces that we're proposing down at the southern end, couple spaces at the northern portion of the site. So, um, this is the only option that we're actually able to expand the parking scenario that we've been looking into. And then in addition to that, there's some other improvements, including drainage infrastructure improvements with these green rectangles that you see in the middle of the site. Um, those are essentially drainage swales, which are essentially twofold. They function, number one, as green space, so, you know, providing additional, um, vegetation and grassed areas across the parking lot. But they also serve to capture and treat stormwater, um, in terms of like a green infrastructure improvement, so that we're not just using structural, uh, best management practices to capture and treat stormwater. So that'll improve the water quality. Um, we also have some solar canopies that we're proposing on the northern portion of the site to meet our green energy goals. Um, and then along the western side of the site, and again, this is gonna be a, an improvement that's consistent across all alternatives. Along the western side of the site, we're proposing to put in a flood wall, um, along the sidewalk, which is essentially just a, a, a retaining wall that'll go there. Um, and that will protect the, the buildings and the shops along Front Street from, you know, some of the flooding that, that might end up coming into Coal Parkway during those larger storm scenarios. So now I'll show a rendering of what this will look like, which will hopefully be a little bit easier to understand. Um, so again, this is a really familiar alternative. We're really just raising the site and making very minimal improvements, um, in terms of changing configurations or green space. We do have the drainage swales here in the middle. Um, you can see some of the potential solar canopy locations. We've got, um, the western flood wall and then the expanded sidewalk along the southern portion of the site. So that's alternative one. Um, alternative two, we separated into two A and two B. Um, because they're, they're very similar. There's just kind of the, the main change there in terms of the green space improvements that we're making. So on the first, uh, or two A, um, we're gonna keep the same exact improvements that we had on the last alternative in terms of the southern portion of the site, so still have the, the raised walkway, still resurfacing the boat ramp. We're still going to be raising the grade of Coal Parkway up to about elevation eight and a half, um, which again allows us to incorporate those raised catch basins and stop that adverse, um, reaction happening from the, the floodwaters coming up through the catch basins. But on this option, the biggest improvement that you'll see is this, this centralized walkway that we have, which, um, again, this serves not only as a pedestrian improvement, it provides, you know, green space, so vegetation. But it also is another, um, drainage infrastructure improvement where it can capture and treat stormwater. So again, meeting those, um, improved water quality, um, requirements and, and having just additional more green space at Coal Parkway. Um, on here, we've also got some, some parking islands that we're proposing to put in. These are just, uh, additional grassed areas to try to separate some of the expanse of pavement. Um, and again, incorporating those flood walls on the western side of the site, some sidewalk improvements. Um, so some similarities, but again, that, that centralized walkway is really the key difference on this option. So again, what that might look like is maintaining the same configuration down at the southern portion of the site. We've got our resurfaced boat ramp, but this is where we have, you know, some raised crosswalks that'll connect, um, to this pedestrian walkway that goes right down the center of the site. And, you know, this is a really great option because it provides direct access from the shops and, and restaurants along Front Street directly to the harbor. So, um, just another avenue for people to kind of provide that pedestrian amenity at the site. So two B is going to maintain roughly the same parking configuration as two A in the central portion of the site. However, the big change is down at the southern end, where we're proposing to, um, essentially reconfigure the front street entrance. So, you know, kind of pulling this entrance a little bit further in. We're removing some of the parking down here, but, you know, still incorporating some parking as angled spaces here, but we're able to include, um, this, this enhanced green space, it's expanded green space. We've got a restored wetland. There's a boardwalk that comes all the way through the site here. So a lot of really nice pedestrian amenities at, at this location. Um, on this option, we're also proposing to extend the boat ramp, um, and resurface it. So this will provide additional, um, you know, access for recreational boaters, for trailered vessels. Right now, the boat ramp's in a little bit of rough shape. It doesn't go all the way down to mean-low water. So it's, the use of it is really restricted by the tides. But on, under this option, we're able to provide access during all tidal scenarios, um, which will be, you know, a, a benefit to recreational boaters. So again, on this option, we're still raising the site. We're still gonna incorporate those, um, catch basin improvements and still have the flood wall protection all along the western side of the site here. Um, so again, this is similar to the last option. We don't have any solar canopies on this option. Um, but you can see where we have that boardwalk that comes all the way around the, the southern perimeter of the site and really provides a lot of great green space improvements, great wetland vegetation, um, and a really nice pedestrian experience down at the southern end of the site. So another thing that I wanted to touch on that was, you know, kind of a key driving factor that we took into consideration as we started developing these alternatives, is the public feedback that we received from the local community. Um, so we had a public engagement effort and it was essentially threefold. There was, um, we had an online survey. There was um, we had an online survey, which provided a lot of really great information where we were able to ask people questions about their preferences for certain design elements. Um, and that, you know, we had, we had about three hundred respondents on that, so a lot of great feedback that we were able to receive from that. And then we also had a public meeting um, back in July, and we had a great turnout at that, probably fifty people came or so. Um, and we had poster boards available during that meeting as well, that people could fill out their preferences for different design elements that we had talked about and presented during the meeting. So I do wanna present just briefly on some of the feedback that we received from the survey, just because that provided a lot of really good quantitative um, metrics that we could use as we develop these alternatives. So, you know, we asked the people questions like, what would you, what state features would you like to see in Cole Parkway? And listed a whole bunch of different options. And through that, we were able to identify a couple of different priority design features. And you know, more green space and shade and the better connected harbor walk came out as kind of the the key top priorities that were identified by the community. Um, and you know, as I had presented the alternatives on two A and two B, which had, you know, the pedestrian walkway through the middle of the site. And then the the green space and boardwalk improvements at the southern end of the site on two A and two B respectively. Um, those two options really tried to take into consideration these priority features that were um, mentioned during the the survey that we got the information on. So those two alternatives really um, emphasize the priority design features. Whereas when we also asked people what their top concern areas for the site were, we found out that flooding and limited parking were, you know, kind of the the main problem areas that the community has been able to see at Cole Parkway. So all three alternatives that I had presented are going to see an improvement in the coastal flooding and in the catch basin flooding, so that's been addressed on all three. But the limited parking, because we're so limited in space in Cole Parkway, we did wanna provide at least one alternative that provided improved parking, which was that first option that I shared, where we have a net increase in parking. Um, but the other two, you know, there there is gonna be a net decrease in parking. But that's essentially how we tried to take this feedback from the community and tie it into our alternatives. Um, and then the last slide that I have to share today, this is sort of where we're at now with the project, and this is a bit of a work in progress. But um, what we're working on is establishing an alternatives analysis. And what we do is we come up with this matrix that really ranks the alternatives against each other. Um, and provides some quantitative measures that we can assign to each option in terms of different criteria. So we take a look at the alternatives in terms of, you know, some of the most important things to consider when we wanna select one for our preferred alternative to continue the design with. So we look at them in terms of the cost, what the impact on the parking spaces are gonna be, permitting and maintenance. Um, as well as the community priorities, like added green space and the pedestrian experience. So you know, looking at a matrix like this, you can see that something like alternative one tends to rank higher in terms of having a cheaper cost. Um, and having a better impact on parking since we're going to be improving the parking. But it doesn't meet the pedestrian experience and the green space vegetation requirements that we wanted to meet um, nearly as much as something like alternative two A or two B does. So you know, looking at on the other end of the spectrum, two B is, yes, it's the most expensive and it does have the most impact on um, reducing the parking at Cole Parkway. It also has a lot of really great benefits in terms of adding green space and vegetation um, and improving the pedestrian experience. So this is kind of where we're at right now on the project. We're working currently with um, our subconsultants on developing a much more robust alternative ranking um, system that we'll we'll be providing to the town. And we're gonna have another public engagement session where we're where we're going to share um, these alternatives and these renderings to the community. And you know, show them how we've been able to incorporate their feedback in these options. But um, that's kind of where the project stands right now, so if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. I'll I'll just start with one. And we'll turn up on the astronomical high tides, right? We talk about the the major storms, I shouldn't understand. Uh, with all three of these al- al- alternatives, all three of these options, at least, help. It's not, I'm not saying cure, but help, we're at, at least on those.
Yeah, yes, so um, Ally, you can maybe take this question. Um, he's asking about the astral fall high tides. Um, and you know, all three alternatives involve uh, replacing the drainage system with that book blender, so water won't be able to come up through the.
Yep, exactly, sorry, it's a it's a little bit hard to hear, I don't know if it's my audio. Um, but yeah, it's so all three alternatives, as Corey said, will be fitted with those backflow preventers on the catch basins. So that alone is going to combat some of the the backflow flooding that we've seen coming up through the catch basins during those king tide events. Um, and then in addition to that, by raising the actual elevation of Cole Parkway up, the top of the catch basins is going to be above what we expect those king tides to be. So that will also work in conjunction with the backflow preventers to prevent that from happening.
Yeah, alright, thank you, that's. Alright.
Sorry.
Uh, so I I think the first off, just thank you for all the work you guys put in. Um, I missed our last meeting because I was out of town, but uh, it's been a great process so far. I think it's been very transparent, I think it's really helped some of the public uh, be understanding of what our priorities are, taking their priorities consideration. Uh, I think the three alternatives currently are all valuable. Um, the 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 most obvious thing I think to the public will be that there are alternatives where parking is. Uh, you know, alternative one, we're actually gaining a few spaces. In alternative two, uh, two A and B, we're losing a significant amount of spaces. I think that most of the public, that's gonna feel uh, painful. But I think that we really have to look at the whole picture of what we're doing for situating terms of flooding, as well as what we're doing situated in terms of what. A lot of people might consider beautification not to be an important topic, but it's not just beautification from a simplistic standpoint, you're really improving. A lot of quality of how people use the harbor, use the walkways, use the green space, use the pedestrian access, use safety, as well as the natural flood direction. So uh, I just wanted to make that clear as we're looking at some of these alternatives. Uh, it's very easy to just say that parking's the only thing that matters. I don't think that's really the reason why we created this project. And um, it might not be easy to say or easy to hear, but I think if we have to consider, I'm gonna talk about the end results, what we should do at Cole Parkway. Um, as a second note, I would say that for anybody that was at the boat ramp on Saturday, where there was seventy odd people screaming at each other, trying to get their boats out the last day of the season due to the rainstorm. Um, the access, the improved ramp in Cole Parkway is going to allow for, I think is a really important consideration in uh, in those alternatives to A to B. Because essentially, if I understand correctly, maybe you can speak to this. I think that would really improve the quality of how many people can put boats in and out on average day and on storm day, or pre-storm day in our harbor in the future. Um, so I don't know if you could, you could sort of speak to that, but if I understand correctly, alternative one does not lower the the ramp to the full potential as two A and two B.
Well, that's actually my question, can alternative one, can you ta- pick and choose from alternatives? Could alternative one also lower the ramp? To me, mom.
Did you hear that, Ally, the two different?
Yeah, so I I guess if you don't mind, I'd I'd like to just repeat the question back to make sure I know what you're asking. Um, it's sorry, I think my audio is a little bit funky on this tonight, so apologies. Um, but yeah, so it sounds like you're wondering if, you know, the on alternative two B, we had shown, let me see if I can actually go back to that. Um, to see if I can pull it up for a visual. But we had shown the boat ramp being extended down into mean low water and, you know, really resurfacing it with like the concrete V groove. Um, this option, to be able to really provide additional access. And you're wondering um, how much access that really will be able to provide. And then I think the other question that I heard was, you know, is is this only tied to alternative two B? Or is this, is there an opportunity for this element to be incorporated into other um, options? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, so um, right now, where the boat ramp is, you know, the the current location of um, the toe of the boat ramp is actually above where the low tide, the water line at low tide is. So it does restrict access during um, during for tidal event. And you know, you could technically go off the boat ramp and kind of put your trailer onto the sand, but um, it's it's not functioning as it really should be designed to. So um, it definitely, by extending it further out into the harbor and and resurfacing it, it's gonna be, it's not gonna have the um, you know, potholes that we've seen if it's gonna be made of concrete. And if it's really gonna be constructed um, as it's supposed to be designed, then it's it is gonna have a lot more benefits added. Um, I will say, you know, the only reason why we did incorporate it only on one alternative is because it is pretty costly. Um, and you know, environmentally regulatory um, invasive to be able to extend something out into the mean low water line. You know, to do something like this, we'd have to put a cofferdam in to be able to construct it. Um, and it is a lot more of, you know, a a an environmental permitting implication for something like this. But um, you know, to answer your question, one thing that we've talked with the town about is that there's a million different things you could do at Cole Parkway. And we really wanted to try to show three alternatives that have a whole bunch of different options that you can do. But we expect um, you know, that for the preferred alternative, we will be able to mix and match different elements. And that's how, you know, as we've been breaking things out into our alternatives analysis and into the cost estimates um, that we provided the town so far. We've been trying to break it out into different design elements that are part of each option. So that way, for the preferred design, we can almost build our own preferred design alternative, or we can incorporate different elements. You know, if we like the, if we'd like the boat ramp on this option, we could pair that with the expanded parking that we have on alternative one. So um, you know, we don't expect that any one of these three alternatives is going to be selected as is. It's probably gonna have some design modifications before this design is actually progressed into future phases.
Thank you. So the the second question I have of district clarification was, in the public meeting and after the public meeting, we discussed the solar canopy options. And one of the things that we discussed was that there were concerns about uh, costs of of those types of functional uh, solutions. But mostly it was placement of those functional solutions getting in the way of certain things like carnival and heritage days, et cetera. Because of other types of tents and other types of structure needing to be brought in, brought out, erected, et cetera. And in in alternative two way, where you have the new central green space corridor, which which I absolutely love, in my opinion. Uh, the the thing I want to maybe note for the public, and maybe again, you could speak to this, is the idea that that central corridor not only is likely to not be in the way of the current types of events we have in Cole Parkway. Because it's one central bank, but also it's a permanent structure, which means you could almost use it as a permanent tent canopy for some of the types of events that we may wanna hold in Cole Parkway, the uh, forest space of the public.
Yeah, exactly, so you know, there's there's parking on this side of the, sorry, it's a little hard to tell, there's parking under these solar canopies. Um, and then there's, you know, this one's green space, so um, definitely they're permanent structures, they're located so that they're placed over where the parking spaces are, so it's not going to eat up any parking. Um, and again, these are just potential locations, it's really gonna depend on um, how the public receives them, once they kind of see them in in rendering format like this. But um, definitely, you know, could provide additional shade, and that's um, you know, we we, the purpose of us including them was really to try to meet the town's um, goals of trying to achieve some some solar and green renewable energy at Cole Parkway. That was one of the um, priorities that was identified in the RFP. So whether it's solar canopies or, you know, even solar pa- panels or shingles that could be mounted on um, the gazebo, there's different ways we could approach that. But we felt that solar canopies is a great way that provides not only shade for parking, um, but also still meets that green space criteria, that uh, renewable energy criteria.
And I have one more question or point uh, for you for clarification. In in one of the alternatives, and I believe it's alternative to B, you talk about the idea of raising uh, the structures at the south end of the walkway. To be an elevated walkway that would match the the wall height, or I'm sorry, to to B as the elevated walkway and and one, two A as the elevated sidewalk. Is there, is there a reason besides cost that we didn't propose elevating the sidewalk to the wall height throughout the length of the edge of Cole Parkway along the east side?
So, sorry, you asked if there is, if there's a reason for cost, I'm sorry.
Is there, is there besides cost of increasing the proposed linear feet of elevated sidewalk? Why is it only the south end and not the entire east bank of sidewalk that would be elevated as a wall height?
Gotcha, so actually, um, we're only, so we're only elevating the sidewalk up to about elevation nine. Right now, this southern portion of the site here is only at about elevation seven and a half to eight. So it's really not a lot of elevation gain that we're having. Um, and the purpose of going up to elevation nine is so that we can match the perimeter along this southern portion of the site to what's already at the eastern side. So the eastern side of the site's already at about elevation nine, so really, what we're doing is we're just kind of raising the southern end up a little bit to meet that.
Alright, thank you.
Sure.
Great.
Alright, I feel like we're dropping flooding in every single scenario, right? My strong feeling is is we cannot lose parking in Cole Parkway. And I'm a little concerned with the solar panel, as Nico said, interrupting carnival and whatnot. Um, and I'd like to see the study for the rest of the area too. I mean, we're not doing this until we do that study, right?
Well, we have an overall, we've already spent, got on top of the whole area and first looked at that, to do everything, the initial, it was eighty dollar, twenty. The the costs are gonna be astronomical, so unless. Well, the next one, a hundred and twenty million, the whole.
For the other.
Yes, this this is, it's like a phased approach, right, for the whole, but this brings it up.
Great, you're amazing.
Yes, so, I mean.
Yeah.
So we just go, just spend a bunch of money, that's. Didn't we vote a couple of weeks ago to study further down by the Mill Ward?
Yes.
Yeah.
And this is all included?
First one, that's true, this is for expanded loss. It was just the. How about, or we do this, we go a quick little history of how this, how it kind of started, looking at the whole area, the ground, but.
No, I re- I mean, I remember that when they were like, all the water was just gonna come in from these other areas. Okay. Don't get rid of any parking. Title D request.
But again, I mean, correct to say, or or, but again, we're looking at this as a big, you know, base approach, this is the highest risk area here. And you know, this place is coastal residency.
Yeah.
A whole town.
It's expensive, you know, very expensive, so you can't do it all at once. Get a hundred little dollars from somewhere, so you can do things incrementally, piece by piece. And this provides a pathway towards.
Yeah.
Even one thing at a time.
It's the art of the possible. But we may actually get on to the next, and go step by step. This is a whole panacea.
What would be the next step here? What is the next?
Page two.
No.
On the page.
After this presentation, that's the next step.
Oh, okay, well, let's talk.
Okay, so the next step after this is to continue to refine the alternatives analysis. Um, we find some cost estimates, she initially provided us with some um, she brought cost estimates, so we're gonna include that, this committee. Um, and we're gonna, the next outcome would is to recommend to you all what our, what committee can see for an alternative, and what that entails. Um, and we can start within that ways to fund it.
To fund it. When do we, I guess that's also the magic number, whether we didn't like a cost estimate or anything else, but we.
Yeah.
Months away, years away.
Oh, well.
Weeks away.
We have some initial cost estimates right here. So um, I don't know, Ally, did you include any slides on cost estimates?
I I didn't put them together, no, not for this presentation.
Okay.
That's, yeah, fine, we'll, we'll later have a more.
Sure, I think you could take away from this that there's somewhat of a consensus, and I can be corrected, that none of us wanna see a, what what you're not seeing in these three examples is. Uh, I I mean, alternative one is a bare bones, it does exactly what you want, which is the nine foot uh, or nine feet, or nine elevation, whatever you wanna call it. Safety barrier or safety height, and you're not messing with much of the parking, which I think is very sensitive to most people in on this board and also in town. It's the parking issues we have down there. Uh, is it the prettiest? No. Does it meet some of the criteria? Modestly so. Could there be something between one and two? Does it meet some of the criteria? Modestly so. Could there be something between one and two A? That makes it a little bit nicer, because I think green space is important. I think maybe some of the solar, like on the gazebo, maybe and some of the other things. So I think there's some things to do. So, continue on, I like, I like where you're going with it.
We're getting, we're getting close.
Yeah.
I think rebuilding the gazebo.
That's part of this.
I mean, yeah.
The what?
It's on the capital plan.
It's all the have no.
It's a per, I. The capital for the spring, the spring, not need to be funded. I know what we're doing here, we're doing, funded and then not doing it until later, but what I see that the gazebo doesn't let's impact the most places.
Well, we're putting solar panels on it, we want to make sure it's not getting roofed, right?
Yeah. I, I like where you're going.
This, again, this is what, what I said earlier, I mean, this is, it's the art of the possible, right? We know, we know, right, option A might be the least, the least expensive. Right, we could add some other elements still, but the rest, here's a, there's actually a path. I mean, it looks like a, when you look at it, you think it's a sieve.
Sure, protect the back and third, yeah, some other.
Yeah.
And that's always.
Whenever, whenever you're ready, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, I think it would be a little bit longer than thirty days.
Sure.
Maybe it's gonna be needed again. But once we get, I think once we get to the point where the committee has ironed out. Some of these details, at that point we'll come back. Let's refer to that. Uh, and then again, this is only like ten percent design, you know, in terms of provision. It would need to be, you know, a lot more designed engineer for.
No, it's, it's, it's a massive undertaking, but it's.
Yes.
Everyone in town is.
And, and harbor, harbor, there was absolutely going to be. Every, every single agency.
A lot of beret, like, man of my existence. I will open this up, any questions? This is sort of, sort of a roomful of engineers, wait till this is, this is done. Really, I'm not.
Yeah.
MIT L M A R.
Starting on the phone. With a question?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll take this. Yeah, we'll, who can take the question?
Steph, can we take that question that's online?
Try. Oh, Ally, you may have to stop sharing the screen to do it.
Oh, whoops, sorry.
Not sorry, yeah. Oh, there we go, uh, Chris Connors has a question.
Yep, sorry about that, one second, um.
Hi, uh, Chris Connors, heavily have, I just saw in the scenarios, actually, I think in the analysis. Maybe the slide's incorrect, but it said minus five in parking scenario one, uh, with a plus of trailers throughout. So I was just wondering, uh, why the priority would be to add trailers? When right now, I, I believe there aren't enough of parking spaces per boat space as per our bylaws. So I'm not sure why we're adding trailers there rather than having them go down at Jericho.
Yeah, so good question. Um, you know, we've, we've seen a lot of, every time we visit the site and from what we've heard from. Um, you know, other people who visit the site frequently is there are a lot of kind of box trucks and larger vehicles that end up taking up. Um, two parking spots that are, you know, just in front of the boat ramp. So, you know, if we are going to improve the boat ramp and provide resurfacing of that, of that amenity. We are going to want to make sure that we're providing enough trailer parking to accommodate people who might want to put their boats in. Um, so there is a little bit of a trade off with that, but that's not to say that, you know, during the winter months or something, it, it has to be necessarily designated as trailer parking. Um, you know, I think it's just, we want to make sure that we're providing that, that amenity for people who do need to use, use those larger spaces. Um, but it's not necessarily a requirement.
Sure, I, yeah, I can understand. It's just that, that the people that pay to have their boats on moorings or slips don't have parking to get to their boats, uh, as it is. So the people coming in with, with trailers without paying any waterways fees or whatnot. Um, can use the state boat ramp without an issue. So I just, I, I didn't understand the prioritization of the, the trailers in lieu of parking spots, that's all.
You also have a lot of the Locksaw Association boats. Their trailers are parked down there when they're putting their tracks in and they'll bring down the trailer with all their tracks. Put them in the trailer since they're doing the thing, so that's another issue down there for those trails.
And again, this, and, um, this is, again, this is our initial, not initial, but this, this is really our first kind of look at it. Again, some of those to go away, we get, this is not, nothing is set in stone, but we haven't done anything. And again, there, there is part of the, the actual parking versus the number, that says how many parking, you know, it says a hundred. But in reality, there's only ninety spots that people can park in. So, but none of this is, you know, exactly where it's going to go. And if the public says, no, we don't want trailer parking, no.
I have an argument that we should support the guys that are trying to make a living in the harbor.
Well, there is trailer parking occurring, I think they're just trying to, and that will make it a little bit more.
Correct, I'm just saying, with all these numbers, let's not take to the bank.
Right now, they take two spaces.
Yeah.
You know, it is what it is.
This is our initial.
Well, we could separate it back into individual parking spaces, and then you have an increase of the eighteen.
Right, basically, right, we're, like, increase the floor and who knows, but. Very good, very good. Good question, though, very good. Thank you. Yeah, can, can we, uh, see the next iteration? Oh, yeah, well, one, final question.
So, what do you feel like, so this map is from the coastal view lava survey from the sixties that shows. Parking design for Cole Parkway.
Okay.
Kind of maximizes parking. Be able to see it, I'm gonna show.
I bet we'd love to see it at the, at the glory at the net for the next meeting. Yeah.
So, let's pass it along.
Yeah, this is, that'd be perfect.
If you want the two, I'll give you the two.
Love the two, this is awesome. Awesome, thank you. Alright.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you, they got to do, right?
Thanks, everyone. Nice to see you all. Have a great night.
Thank you. Now for our next group of engineers. Our thirty, thirty-three, eighty-seven? Thirty-three. Oh, hold on, that was fun, that was. How's everyone doing? Wonderful, thank you. Alright, our favorite, one of our favorite subjects, well, yeah, this is, music to my ears, I and I. Water. I tell everybody.
I can update it first, and then we went to I and I.
This is your second.
I and I.
It's all, it's all connect. That's what I learned, it's all connect. Alright, let's go. I love it. Okay, so, uh, we'll hand it over to Dan Scott, who I'm a little, he'll give you an update on where we are and what's happening. Dan, it's all you.
Uh, thanks everyone for the opportunity, but update on our project. We've made some substantial progress since we last sat for you in June. Uh, that's what we wanted to talk through tonight, going up what we've done since then, what we're working on now. And the overall project schedule, the entirety of the project. Uh, so we finished preliminary design, uh, being deliverable for that phase of work is a preliminary design report. Uh, that's going to serve as the foundation for the entirety of the design. Uh, it lays out our conceptual designs, so the pump station, sewer pipes, structures, low pressure sewer. Uh, we also looked at permitting and, uh, the schedule for the project along with funding options. Uh, we also talked about in that report, uh, some of the work we've done before our last appearance before the slide board. Which included existing conditions and also our work, uh, with the hydrologic model. And the downstream, who dance, uh, preferred alternative. That's right, now we are working on ninety percent design. Um, so this is just a, continuing on the momentum of the preliminary design report. Uh, mainly focused on detailed plans and specifications. Uh, just taking our conceptual design and weighing it out and looking, uh, through some of the utility conflicts that might exist. Uh, really honing in some of the technical details, uh, to move forward with the construction. And then also starting some of the permitting activities, uh, including, uh, the project notification form for the mass historic aspect of the permitting. And then beginning some of the local con, con conversations and, uh, other permitting activities. Uh, also just pining off some loose ends on the existing conditions information. Uh, so a few more borings along the preferred alternative alignment. And then some pressure testing of the existing dry sewer that was installed in the MBTA project, uh, twenty years ago.
Any surprises, anything, said, what's going on here? Pretty normal thus far.
So you're testing the line that's underneath the tracks? Is it viable?
It's been there for twenty years, so it's just a check to make sure it's going to perform as planned. It's a routine thing to do with pipes to make sure, um, as they circulate, they're still meeting the plan, you know.
So far, so good.
Yes.
Alright, I like goodness.
So, under the tracks itself, it's asleep.
Yes.
So, just to say, under the tracks, so when the pipe goes on the tracks, it's a, it's a sleeve that we insert the pipe into. It's a metal, big metal pipe, the, the pipe will want to be, so it's not a, it's not a sewer pipe.
It's not the pipe that runs along the train tracks, it's in North City, it's more cutting out of the train.
Across your track.
Yes, it crosses the track.
It's a pipe that holds the pipe.
You can't take your sewage over the track.
You could, but it'd be under.
The last one.
Gotta go.
There, there was, there is a pipe that runs along the right of way that was.
But we're not testing.
We're not using that, it's too old, we can't get out if something happens.
Okay, so, that's way out.
This is actually in North City Village where it goes out of the tracks to connect up the country way.
To make sure that, so.
Okay.
Got it.
So next we're going to talk about the proposed pump station. Uh, figure on the right shows just an overview of the, the whole project. So just to remind you, the green is the expansion area. Uh, the blue square is where we're planning to install the new pump station. At the intersection of Ganna Road and Countryway on the east side.
So if I can cut you off for one second, Dan, it's, it's gonna be, the pump station looks like it's gonna be right in the. Beginning section of the parking lot on the street side, that we can slide it into the MBTA parking lot. That's right there.
For a quick show.
But next slide, we have a slide. Okay.
Sorry, that was coming, I got it.
Yep, there it is, next slide, sorry, I'm ahead of myself.
Just go back for one second, I'm not done on this. Something that's very important is that, like, the last two lines, that red line is a force main. We already started getting calls from people saying, can I connect into the sewer when it goes by my house? That is a force main, if you're not connecting, the force main, so the answer is no.
Right.
Alright, next slide. So this is a preliminary layout of the pump station. Uh, so as Kevin said, it's on the eastern side of the parking lot. Uh, not a, not a big, uh, footprint, there is going to be a chain link fence, an access driveway. Uh, a concrete wet well and about a twenty by twenty preliminary laid out building for the equipment. Uh, which will discharge into the six inch force main that goes down to Beaver Dam.
Generator inside.
Yes, generator will be on the inside.
How big is this?
It's a one story building and it's going to be about twenty feet, considerably twenty feet by twenty feet. Based on just following codes.
Hopefully it'll look similar to what's up for the Squash Cat Pump Station up out of the road, we could maybe look the same as that.
Not the one at Eden Beach? Is that what you're talking about?
No, the one not further north, um, on the right hand side.
Okay, I'm gonna leave my call.
One out of the road.
So how many parking spaces are there?
Six. Six, three. You can add the number, okay. Um, there will be lots of parking, but, um. We gained two of them.
And we'll gain others in other place, um, we'll reconfigure.
I, I think they're gonna put some extra spots for Parkway for us.
But you can make it.
It's pot, or it's pots for a sewer.
Well, I mean, there's gonna be way higher demand for the entire course to it with, with being a business district, right, he's just asking.
That is the problem we want, never enough to be wanted, so busy, there's never enough.
Yeah, you want it where there's.
I'm more ways.
Yes.
But I agree with you. But we can basically, we can make it look as pretty as we want, it's gonna cost. Right, we could put, you can put a.
You're all of laws.
Around, you can make it look like an old cottage house.
So, so one of the things is, we were gonna, we were gonna keep it kind of consistent with the Squash Cat Park. And then maybe something that we could do is instead of a chain fence, we could make a nicer fence and, you know, we can always, yeah. Sweet it up like that, but that's in the fine, fine details of the project, one of, one of the, so, right.
Nice.
That's not something you grew up for, how do we make this look really pretty? I mean, maybe you did, but.
Good news.
It's gonna be in the heart right there.
Yes.
No, the, the objective is always to have it wind in of the area when you try to do the architecture for a pump station. Uh, so our project schedule, uh, has gone unchanged since our last, uh, meeting. We're doing the geotechnological predictions over the next two months, so have those wrapped up in November. Uh, wrap up ninety, ninety percent design by the end of January. And work through permanent permits by the end of April, two thousand twenty-six. And include design in May of two thousand twenty-six. And in September, two thousand twenty-six, go to bid, and award the following month in October. And then our construction duration is still estimated at twenty months, starting in November twenty-six, ending in June of two thousand twenty-eight. Uh, with the caveat that they will remain, uh, final paid in the spring of two thousand twenty-nine, that's the trend, trend to set up.
Great.
Very exciting.
We get it, as of today, barring anything danger, you then we can start construction. November twenty, twenty-six. Before any area else is prepared. That is.
Uh, once we get it to hundred percent design, that's things just getting done in place and then be ready to bid it.
With fifteen minutes left.
That's very exciting. I don't know when they snuck into my backyard and did the flagging, but I looked out the other day and I was like, oh, there's red flags all over my street. When did that happen?
So, yeah, some questions.
Only question we've gotten.
Good, you're good.
I'm excited.
Keep going. Stay on schedule.
What should we be concerned with? Permitting, that could, what can.
That's, that's the next step. No, um, so far, things have been moving on pretty well. Uh, one of the problems that we are having recently is with the MBTA. Because we found one of the manholes where the, um, flank pipe is in and the other one was paved over. So we have to dig it up and we're, it's just taking forever dealing with the T. Um, just to open up that, catch the manhole cover and get in there. It's, it's been like, what, already four weeks, six weeks since they submitted the permit to do that? And then they're gonna probably not get answered for another.
It's a ninety day review process.
Another ninety day review process, so just anything you do with the T is a prevention thing, so.
That's great. Guys, good.
You all set?
Alright, this is fabulous, thank you. It's, um, it's gonna be critical for us, it's thirteen months, I can't believe it. Alright, thank you. You're welcome, Mike, you're fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rock, go, go.
Back to, okay, alright, now, I and I.
We'll get stuff.
Take engineers now.
This is the case is engineer, guys.
Good to see you again, guys.
Good to see you again.
Well, I do that after, we will, we'll go through the presentation and then we'll change the rest.
Uh, I'm, my name's Maria George, I'm from Apex, and I've been working with situat on the, uh, inflow and infiltration, uh, removal program. Um, so to give a brief overview, we, uh, started back in, uh, twenty twenty with the initial field study. Uh, smoke testing, a lot of, uh, C C T D inspection of, uh, various sewer lines. I'm, I'm sorry, is this the P P F or the presentation?
P P F.
Okay, okay, alright, that's fine.
Do a little more, but.
Okay, okay, that's, that's, that's good. Alright, thank you, I'm sorry, can you go back? Okay, um, so, uh, there's, uh, the, the area. the the area on the right has this graded map that with a bunch of colored line on top. So that is the general area where we've been focusing on the IHI study. So we worked with, so from the from the initial study in two thousand twenty, we identified key areas that we wanted to look at. And then in two thousand twenty-one, Cedar Point Construction was completed where those pipes were completely removed and replaced with new pipes. They were had lots of holes through them and were basically still. Then in two thousand twenty-three, we proceeded with trenchless rehabilitation where without having to dig up anything, we were able to work from the ground, send a new liner into the pipes and seal off any leaks from coming into the pipe. So without having to take anything up. So that's called cured and placed pipe or CIPB.
So that's like a little like goes ahead and like expands out.
Yep.
Moves a little.
Yeah, so it's like a sock, a fabric material that's coated with this resin that when heat is applied, it hardens into a plastic. So that part, that takes shape with the pipe. So in two thousand twenty-three, we went through a process of lining various pipes throughout the town. And then now on the second phase of work, we are doing the same thing in a few different areas. So I have shown in orange and pink a few different areas that we added with this phase one of lining and phase two of lining. And so in total, from what we've seen with our inspection, we have about forty-seven thousand feet of pipe that has been lined for us. So from the inspections, we're able to make a rough estimate of how much inflow and infiltration is coming in. It's it's very variable. So inflow comes in when it rains. Water can get in through leaking animal covers or if someone has a sump pump directly connected to the sewer, then then the rainwater enters the basement, which is sent into the sewer. So that's inflow and infiltration is water from the ground that's leaking into the pipes through cracks and and other holes. So the amount of water that goes into the pipes varies with groundwater, with the amount of rainfall you have. When for the pipes that are near the coast, with the tide, it can vary the amount of water you come in. Still, taking all those variables in mind, we can put together some numbers. Through the phase one and phase two lining, we sealed off over a hundred different leaks with about twenty-seven of them being significant leaks like the picture in the top right. So that's called a gusher, is the mistake.
It's an engineering term.
Very technical. And so based on the size of the leak and how many and counting up how many leaks that we see, we put together these estimates of how much peak infiltration is coming into the pipes. So the high amount is about two hundred twenty-five thousand gallons per day. But if you divide that out based on your drier days and and times where you you have holes, but water isn't coming pouring in through it during that time, dividing that by a factor of three, more, but an average infiltration rate of seventy-five thousand gallons per day that has been removed through all of this work. So in addition, we've also, over the past couple of years, I have information up to two thousand twenty-three for new businesses and houses that have been connected to the sewer system. That adds in an additional about fifty-six thousand gallons per day of flow. And so then, as talked about in the previous presentation, the North City area that we want to connect it is approximately sixty-five thousand gallons per day. So we're making progress in removing the amount of infiltration and flow that's coming in.
Do you, well, last question for the guy. Sorry, keep going.
Okay, so this is a little bit, so so those are all estimates. And then we have actual data that we can look at. So this is a graph of the, so the red wavy line at the top, that is the amount of flow in a million gallons per day that is leaving the wastewater treatment plant. We take the average monthly flow and then we average it over the past twelve months to get this rolling average of flow that's leaving the treatment plant. So we have the the solid red line is that rolling average. And then there's a fainter dashed red line that is going through the middle. That's that's the approximate.
Scimmient of average.
Yeah.
That's going downwards.
Yes, so in in general, yes, that that is trending downwards. And so this graph is from two thousand twenty to current date.
So I'm sorry.
You're right.
Or Will, why March? Why is March so high every year?
So why is it warm?
It's spring, spring, snow melt and rain, classical snow melt.
You did have storms.
And storms, I suppose.
You didn't say that. Lot of fluffers there.
Quite true, yes.
A lot of guys.
So I also included in this graph is the blue bars they were already looking at. That's the total rainfall per month. And so there's also a trend line with that. That also is going down relatively comparably with the sewer flow. But given that we've already been adding in flow from all the additional connections, the fact that we're still trending downwards in the treatment plant affluent is indicative of the progress that has been made of the IHI.
So so here, this is, this blue line is the trend in rainfall. So basically, it's trending downwards. And then you would you would expect a similar trend downward in your flows at the plant. Now, unless you had two years with with identical weather patterns every day, it's hard to compare apples and apples, but the the conclusion is the trend is going in the right direction, which proves that what we're doing is working effectively. And and more importantly, creating capacity that you badly need.
That's not just, because we've talked about this, and you've been here for this, that it's, do we have a rainfall problem? Is this, is the sewer is it really, you know, user, right? Because we're being held to a standard in fifty, sixty percent of what we're actually creating in rainwater at times.
Yeah.
You know, what's the most effective way? And this is great to see that.
Yeah, I mean, the Cedar Point job we did three or four years ago was kind of like the gold standard. I mean, we replaced every pipe and every pipe and every level to deal with those problems. But that's, that was the gold standard. And but obviously, but badly needed out there. And you couldn't do it throughout the whole town. It would be, you know, cost prohibitive. But what we are doing, based on those photographs and those gushers and, you know, runners, it's really amazing how much, it's a, you know, it's like this a hundred little leaks add up to a big leak. So we're, we're pumping all these these little holes into the leaks and it's showing some progress.
Questions?
The water, I'm sorry.
No, I won't.
Yeah, Kevin.
No questions for us yet?
No.
So while we were, while we were out doing a lot of the research and and working with the contractor, we did discover an additional seven gushers that were not in the contract, as well as some manholes that were in poor shape. So by being in poor shape is that they're leaking, they have, you know, hydrogen sulfurethane damage just from the from the sewer, hydrogen sulfide damage. And one of the things we brought up is we've we've got a very good contractor that specializes in this now. So we figured we'd bring it before the board and give the option of fixing it now by issuing a contract or a change order. I would suggest it highly. I think it's a bang for the buck and they're already out here. And so we're all a pretty good deal. So that's, that's the essence of that. And the next item is actually, I think after this is is applicable to change order, the motion that it makes.
How's it paid for? Out of the IHI funds?
They have existing appropriations for the IHI.
We haven't spent.
We haven't spent.
Right, okay. I think it's like two hundred thousand.
They have bigger projects, over a million dollars.
Good.
I do have a question. So so we found an additional seven gushers that weren't in the current contract. We find gushers as we go by accident. They just, they happen to show up where we're looking. We're not some kind of scientific way to think of where they're gonna be as much as we're checking pipes as we go.
See, and we were talking about this beforehand, Paul and I were discussing it. And Marie and Will, it's kind of the black art, you know, of engineering because one day you don't have a leak and then the next day a leak pops up as you're fixing this. So we discovered as we were in there cleaning the other line team, you know, lining them, that we found additional leaks that we didn't see before through some of the camera work. So it could have just opened up recently, the road could have settled, anything could have happened. But while we see them, it's a good idea. We can try to get all those areas fixed. And for the money, it's actually fairly cheap to remove that gallon from the system.
There is, I mean, there's a system out there with the smoke testing and with the camera work. They are looking to see where it is at the end of the next day.
There is. There was also a very large inflammation filtration study back in two thousand seventeen, which provided us a priority list of areas to target in a scientific based fashion. And we've been proceeding through those phases. But that data was in two thousand seventeen.
No questions?
Nothing.
If you look, if you look at hindsight, when you look at that two thousand seventeen study and you look at where it told you to look and you compare it to where you're finding the problems, is it fairly accurate from last year?
It's been very accurate.
You know how to find them.
They don't have a fight.
They know how to find the gusher. I'm glad. I'd be tired thinking.
There's no sort of hate back here. Is there anything that were? Like you've seen other towns do, this wasn't in your in your notes. I've been obsessed with other like wireless yardals for commercial buildings that is there anything else that you can do for at the outskirts to help? Try to lower usage or anything else would be helpful. I know at these levels, but anything.
There's no magic bullet. I mean, the waterless urinals and the, you know, Cleveland's Multrum, you know, toilets. Uh, practically speaking, no. I think we're doing, we're doing a mechanical, dual herd process. And we are removing flow and we'll see less flow of the plant and you're spending less money to pump it and treat it. So we're on the right track. There's there's no magic bullets for, you know.
No, no magic bullet. Is there anything else that you had? Like you've seen other, I just look for other best practices for the commercial.
I mean, also, you know, low flow plumbing devices are a part of the really cool. Yeah, sure. So the part of the really cool right now is have low flow, low flow appliances.
And I think we've taken it, we're taking it a step further because a lot of what we do in, we start at the succeed point is when we put the pipes in, we actually tape the joints. So even if the pipe joints opened up, which a lot of, I don't know of any other town that does that.
No, yeah.
We tape the joints.
The inspection, like here's my favorite examples that I guess you have, I think we're in a few towns that does the inspection when the person herself has to move up to the sewer. Right, that's all.
That's no, that's just, yeah, that's huge.
Anything that, no, we're open to all suggestions.
Yeah.
That I guess that was more my question for best practices. Keep that in mind.
You're arguing.
Just again, so the board remembers the big pickup on IHI that we're gonna get is when the water treatment plant goes off.
Right.
It's what, forty, fifty thousand gallons we're doing now? Plus Will has a capital project that's another eight for ten.
Four million gallons over the years. That's a plus thousand a day.
That we, that I'm recommending the capital level. I'll help that. So between those and what we already got, we don't have any large projects in line ahead of North City, if that makes sense.
Got it.
So with that sixty-five thousand, I thought that was only hiding that, but you're now getting into the ballpark of what we need for North City.
Yay.
That's.
Good news.
Motion, Matt, yes.
Fifteen months away.
Moving at the select, we're awarding the change order to National Water Name of Danington, Massachusetts for ninety-seven, oh, three hundred ninety-two dollars and forty cents.
Number five. No more seconds. Let me go. All in favor?
Hi.
Aye. Yeah, this is great.
Thank you very much.
Be that.
Thank you. Well done.
Oh.
You're not playing it wrong. Not good to my blood.
Eight fifteen and.
For that sky. Salt for my blood pressure.
You need a drink for your blood pressure.
Okay, so every minute. All the wire, they were about.
No, we don't have charge factor. We don't.
Oh, you have.
You shot one.
The wire. So can you please come back then?
No, no, no. Not right now. We're good.
We're okay.
We don't have a push under the desk.
Are we, what about, no, we have.
It looks like it, we got wires.
It's a solid wire.
All right.
You have a rule.
Sorry, I do.
You're special.
Anyway, we're buying time because of the sewer. We can, we can start. Let's talk about the Morton Salt Company contract.
Motion to have plugs under the desk.
We need more budget. All right, let's talk salts.
Okay, this is exciting. I know you've already approved one contract for the salt, but Nancy was was very aggressive on getting it. Usually the state bid list is the lower, but we participate in two bid processes. One of the ones we do is through Plymouth County, Plymouth County Highway Association of Plymouth. They bid and their bid was three dollars and nine cents lower than what the state bid is. So we are, we voided the other contract and we are writing the new contract, which is all set here to save us three dollars and nine cents per contract.
Nancy had a coupon.
No, I think she's a coupon. We were very excited to buy for five days.
Five for five.
We always do the state big list and we always cheat, cheat a little bit and you get on, oh, have it twice.
This is replacing, this is replacing the contract we approved about a month ago.
Yes.
Yes.
I just said three bucks.
Yeah, but it was an if contract. Those, we already have salt. This is an if we're allowed.
Yeah, you do the vice. All right.
All right, do it.
Anyone?
Who was this saying tonight? Who does the select for the contract to purchase road salt from Morton Salt Company for sixty-five dollars and seventy-three cents per ton?
No more seconds. Spare some, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Woo. All right.
Thanks, sir.
Well done. As always.
Kevin grinds them down. No pun intended with salt.
Those salt will be yours. All right, and electrical, excuse me.
Yeah. On call.
Yeah, so we have several on call contracts. This particular one had one more year on its extension. Speaking to people who use it, they chose not to continue with the vendor and asked to go back up to bid. We had four bidders. A local German Christian Cedar Home was the low bidder, Cedar Home Electrical Contractors, Inc. You have priced the bid summary in front of you. It's ninety dollars for an hour, and they're break between seven and three o'clock on weekday. Week, weekdays from three to seven, and Saturdays is a hundred thirty-five dollars an hour. And then Sundays and holidays is a hundred and eighty dollars an hour. Marco from Terros is ten percent. And this particular vendor will offer a prompt pay discount of two percent in payment in fifteen days. So you know, we are now be all over that. So our recommendation is to award a one year contract to Cedar Home Electrical Contractors, Inc. for on call electrical services for town and school buildings with two one year extension options. And we have used Cedar Home before in in town for smaller projects.
Yes, I said, it sounded familiar.
Yeah.
Right, so it's not unknown.
No, and everyone's, Cam is very happy, our facilities director, believes that that Mr. Cedar Home was the low bidder. And he did bid on the prior contract, but he wasn't the low bidder.
This is first.
Also, simple soundtrack question, Nancy. If we have two one year extension options, are those extension options at our courtesy and maintain the same price points?
Have to maintain the same price point. Have to maintain the same price point and it's by mutual consent.
Thank you.
Question.
I did not have questions.
Awesome.
I'm very proud.
Move to board a contract Cedar Home Electrical Contractors Incorporated for on-call electrical services for town and school buildings. At hourly rates for one year with two one-year extension options.
No more second of the nine.
Second.
All in favor, I didn't know.
The next contract I have for you is our independent audit services. Um, we did have a contract with Powers and Sullivan, L L P at Wakefield. They were acquired by Markham, M L P, um, almost two years ago. And then they were subsequently acquired again by C B I's, CPAs. We're looking for a little consistency here in our independent audit. There is quite a bit of a difference in their, um. Manner in which they audit the town, which is good, it's good to have a change, um, and see things from a different perspective. This contract will run for the August of fiscal years twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth, so it will start, um, for the next fiscal year's audit. It will be two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars over the three-year cycle. And that's on a, um, graduated increase, sixty-five thousand, seventy thousand, seventy-five thousand for base audit. And then the end of year report is six thousand, seven thousand, and then eight thousand respectively.
We're, I mean, obviously we wanted to, but we're also obligated to.
Yes.
I guess the only question I'd have would be, is there a reason that sixty-five, seven, seven-five with their theoretically surpassing baseline inflation by a couple?
Uh, they want it to be seventy-five all four years. And we were negotiating it, we negotiated it down so that we ended at seventy-five. Not psychopathic, but I'll take the, the one I can add. Here's a question.
No.
I do sound.
No, I guess. Do you have to do it? Yeah. And it's recommended by our.
Right, it's how we are interested. That's such a great value.
Move to award a contract to C B I Z CPAs for independent audit services for fiscal year twenty-sixth through fiscal year twenty-eighth. In the amount of twenty-one, two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
No more second of the nine, it's fair enough, all in favor? Aye. unanimous. All right, so next we have.
Rain layer.
Rain layers. And questions or comments on, uh, Lorenzo Company?
No, it works in order, I mean.
It works in order, gunness, it's like a yearly thing.
Yes.
No complaints, no issues, no contact at us.
Right.
I'll take them both.
Motion to approve drain light, drain layers license, PJ Lorenzo Company.
Second. No more second, Nika, all in everyone. Uh, who's in favor, aye? Uh, it's unanimous. This is, this is a discussion. Uh, of course, Chair.
Let's go.
Hot?
Yeah.
Shellfish.
So this is a brief discussion against the temperature of the board with, um. So we've had agriculture, we've had licenses for grants for now in the years, we renew past the two years for another five years. But the, um, three licenses that each have one acre, they're kind of. Tight in that acre, as they, as you would expect, who is, who, who, they start out like it's big and they get bigger, so. We have more real estate, no, it's, it's not this big, I've gone there and then they get bigger. We need more space and there's been a request to kind of think about it or not, this wouldn't be able to make a decision, it's just that we have a. The temperature of the board can move forward with, um. Additional acreage for the existing farmers.
Well, um.
Thoughts on that?
What, what, yeah, okay, can you define to, for the record?
For the, oh, for the record.
Right now they're at.
One acre.
One acre per.
So three total.
And then how many acres would they like to expand?
Two per, so six total.
Six total.
So this is a.
So they go from one to two each?
Correct, or three total, this six total each, which is pretty much about, yeah, pretty much what we need for a small business like that.
I think I'll, I'll put it out, I'll say it on the, on the record for, um. For anyone watching and seeing, everyone who talked to our, uh. So, so, we're in Goacid, our. Our friends over there, we've been very good, we've talked about, um, making sure and we do this, that we're, want to take their thoughts and I. I'm telling you, I seriously want to take their thoughts with consideration into answer some of the navigation law issues or the rest of it, if we do add some of that we. Um, uh, talk about taking it, uh, away from where some of the voters go, so we'll do it in a, in a way. We're not talking about exact spaces tonight, we're just trying to see, if there's a character to expand. Um, we're going to explore that.
And this wouldn't be against any sort of growing up with that since we would have talked about, since they, it's always been.
Yes, right, I'm just trying to. No, we're taking that seriously, we're not trying to.
Consistent with promoting all businesses in our town. We do this in organized proper manager, management with consideration to some of the things you're alluding to, I think it's the right way to go. But yes, we need to get all of the consideration. I did have the pleasure of going up there on, on the town police boat. They brought me up to the, the, uh, oyster beds there and unless you point them out, you don't even know they're there. So. I'm in favor of it, but as you've done in an organized manner, that's all respectful, yeah.
Thoughts, concerns?
I agree with Jamie, I think that, uh, anything that is advancing the value of our businesses, our business community is worth considering. I think they're going to be, we've raised a couple of questions from the public. I think that. I, I have perspective on those questions, but I think that regardless, we don't have the information to make a final decision anyway. I think it's important to go and get that information. So we have a complete picture of what, where, who's going to impact, how it's going to impact them, what the value, objective value to the town in terms of tactic, what things might be. Uh, how it improves cultural aspects of the town as well, because I think that's really important consideration for us. Uh, how it might impact residents and other resident concerns, but, um, our business community. Needs the ability to expand and I think that we'll talk so often about ways in which to limit taxes on our residents and homeowners and. This may not feel like a massive shift all of a sudden, but I think it's a piece of advice, I'm in favor of getting. Information so that we make a good decision.
Yeah. I'm in support of all small businesses in the city, I went up there as well, I didn't. See anything, if you know, it was dead load bad and they were apologizing for not being able to show me what I wanted to see because it was under the water. Um. I mean, I do have. Some questions if it's a title, uh, a title search issue, a cost issue, or it's just expanding. In waters that we already.
We're real.
Own. I think that's a big difference, because I heard scary numbers about that, whether they're true or not, I don't know. Um, but I would be interested in going forward to. Into it, sure.
I mean, yeah, I obviously, um. Want to support all those folks wherever we can, I think I have to, we have a little bit of what. Uh, see, again, are they possible, what can we do? Uh. Yeah, that's just the next stage, right?
Right.
We can say, we.
The next phase.
You look and say, it's a great idea, it's a terrible idea, we don't know, we just want to look, we want to see, we go to the next step.
So guys, in regards to the next step, is the next step to have the most of farmers come, who was with their perspectives and their information?
Well, we would work for a next step, yeah. And they have presented to us.
Yeah, I mean, and. And I believe that we've said, we want additional.
We've heard that, and we can refresh us and.
Sure.
Give us their input. We're going to talk about egress and incidentality.
And again, we're not, we're not. Today, or even at that meeting, it's not going to be that's exactly where they're going to go, they have to work with. DMS or, DMS, I never say it.
No, the, uh, whatever.
You're like, where's our worker in place, what's allowable, what's not allowable?
Do we want to, do we want to see, do we want a formal, uh, discussion with Goacid, or is that something that we feel is comfortable and we don't need to?
We're already going to be within our footprint.
I will, I will, I will say, I will definitely reach out. I will definitely.
That doesn't need to be, yeah.
Okay. No, it will be important to let them, to let, uh, those folks know. That's what it costs. If we want to be comfortable. If we do this, we, we pray for everybody.
Right.
All right, so we're good? Thank you very much, Steve.
No.
So we got. Shellfish.
Yeah, keep it.
No, we have.
All right, that answers.
All right.
Good.
We will go on to the next, it is on. Go for it, yes.
Um. In particular, our Westport Sister City Committee. Um, was at that meeting, the last meeting, had a new gentleman that we added to the board there. A very energetic fellow. But. His name is Skip Fernandez, just for that, and he's, he's, he's taken on two interesting concepts, which you should just be aware of, of. What is Irish Sports Exhibition Game in the city?
I love Irish sport, right?
Uh, this would be for our high school level kids, they're getting, so we're going to do that. Would not do that sport.
Not risk.
But it could, it could be, uh, rugby.
All of the stack.
Yeah. Could be, not cricket, but.
We don't know.
What? Berlin.
Berlin, that's the one, thank you, Berlin.
So they're meeting, they're meeting with Naked Recreation and bring that along, and then the other thing that was a great idea is Irish Arts and Music on City with cable television. And they've spoken with Seth and they're going to be working something out to, uh, promote that. Um, yeah, I just, it's very exciting. Yeah, it's, it's very, the more we can do, we can do cultures together, Gaelic football.
Gaelic handball.
Gaelic handball.
Soccer.
Soccer.
Cricket.
Cricket.
Road bowling, what is?
I know road bowling, you don't want to do that, that's all, it's a game, like, it's not over yet.
Now, long by office.
Yeah, Rec Recreation Commission, I met with them, uh, their last meeting, they added two people to the board there. So that's, uh, fully, not fully charged board. Um. Uh, wind screens at the recreational court behind, uh, the rec department, they're looking at that to, to help. Bring some of the sound down along, on the pickleball areas there. Uh, next, tomorrow night I have affordable housing trust and then Monday night the F C P C.
We're on it. Perfect, thank you. Anyone else?
Good. Uh, I just have one tonight, uh, sidewalk committee, uh, subcommittee under E B C, this met. You've talked since sort of for our last meeting, we're making good progress. On, uh, potential list of prioritized new sidewalk construction and repairs in situ. Uh, we are having an open public meeting to hear from anyone who has perspective for possible open projects to discuss. Before we make an assessment of those listed, uh, we're currently standing at nineteen possible potential projects. Um, and so looking for public input, the meeting will be November sixth at six thirty P M at the senior center in the Peggy Room. Um, we will be virtually broadcasting that meeting so that people can join, we assume if they wish. Uh, and the, the purpose would be that if any resident has, uh, an interest, not necessarily in just putting sidewalk in front of their own house, but has. Potential for sidewalk to be of value to the community and in the area in situ. We would really love to hear their input, uh, as well as they'll be able to hear, uh, our current spreadsheet and, uh, processes behind where the projects are at the moment. Um, the projects will not be prioritized or submitted to E B C or the select board. Until after that meeting, so that we collect as much input and as, as over the process as possible.
Hmm.
So again, so November sixth, six thirty P M at the senior center in Peggy.
Yeah.
Number six, yeah, of course.
Just, yeah, when you're talking about sidewalks in front of somebody, property, residential or business, whatever. Is there a, a matrix that says if you have this, 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 you should consider a sidewalk?
We have a matrix that we are, that we have already had from old reports that we are auditing and editing for the new. So there'll be a new matrix that will be applied to all projects that we assess prior to presenting it into the town.
Yeah.
And so the, the point is that we want to collect anybody's input on where they would like a sidewalk, why they would like or not like a sidewalk. Uh, so we have public input, once that's completed, then the committee will be making an estimation based on matrix. They'll have multiple variables.
Can I share an example, when you bought my house many years ago? And, uh, there was a period of really nice group of neighbors that, really good people, and they came, they came to my door and they said, well, we want to think about putting a sidewalk in. So I went down and I cleared the six feet all along my. My property's front line so that it would be easier to even consider or visualize putting a sidewalk in. But then I was like, oh, we're at the end of the best end of the town, there isn't a sidewalk to connect to for miles. So it never really went anywhere further. But if, if there was a matrix that said, if you're, you know, you're within two hundred feet of the closest next sidewalk, if there's lots of kids, if there's school.
Lots of time.
Any kind of thing like that that would help somebody, aside from me just going down and with like weed whacker, hedge trimmers and. Killing myself for two, two weeks and finding out that we're not going to do it.
You hired someone.
So, so.
Right, years ago.
So, so one of the, one of the maybe.
Two guys.
I'll use that as an obvious point, we, we are not putting out there some kind of current matrix for the public to consider because it's not an official structure yet and to be frank. The subcommittee on sidewalks isn't proposing something that the town's going to take and apply.
Right.
The sidewalk committee is trying to collect information, present it in a rational sense, prioritize it based on some variables. But that's ultimately going to go to the town and then to the D P W and highway for engineering to look at. And then all of that gets punched up against budgetary considerations. So we have a new line item that was approved for, what, twenty-seven?
So I don't need to get down, carry down there again.
But, but to your point, one of the variables that's highly likely to be a strong consideration is, does a new sidewalk project connect existing sidewalk? At one or both ends, does it, does it bridge a current gap between point A and B that already have sidewalks? Or does it extend a current sidewalk further into, and if it does, does it add more than just the, you know, connection point to a certain number of homes on that road? Or does it access an entire new neighborhood that might be offset to that? So there are, there are, uh, variables we're considering, uh, but. We're not looking for the public to try and gain some kind of variables as much as we're simply looking for public input. We sincerely want to know what people want in situ, why they want it, what the thought processes are. So that when we're putting our, our best together to come up with actual recommendations, we have the best interest of the masked public. So.
Yeah, we, we didn't have that place on the main.
Well, we did, we had a two thousand and seven study that we were given place and approximately fifty percent of those projects will extend over about a ten-year period. Uh, and then other things, we can't prioritize, so we're trying to review that and remember recycling, just make sure that no poles look out of the sidewalks.
That's interesting.
Um, the planning board is working very, very hard on their stormwater plans, their deadline is December thirty-first. And they have like. Four or five A D U's in the last couple of weeks. On a side note, I've had three residents reach out to me about. Building projects in town that they don't believe are being followed up on.
Are these like A D U building projects?
Uh.
Or just three of them?
Two of them are A D U.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, we had a motion here from the veterans, but um. The, the F W is looking to be view a fundraiser to help with some of the veterans' costs, uh, including that Reese Across America. They might do have lobster bingo, October twenty-four and November fifteenth are the dates. Um. Live lobsters, I guess, donated by lobstermen and bingo muffs. Um, the chair of honor, um, is in poor condition. Eddie Gibbons took it upon himself to get the plaque out and um is brought it to. Somebody whose name I didn't write down, um, South Shore sign, and they're rebuilding the, um, the sign for us at no cost. And they're hoping to get that, um, back because it was, um, just really weathered, I guess it wasn't made for the outside world. And um, we're gonna have a presentation from the excess memorial on the. Um, council on aging had ninety new registrations last week.
Wow.
Or last month, rather, yeah, huge, huge, uh, they even have about like forty, ninety new people come in last month. I think they did like a back-to-school event, so they were trying to encourage to. People that come in, I mean, they're bumping, they're um.
Little management.
You build it now?
They were all senior citizens, um. They are fully staffed now, they are looking for a part-time dishwasher. Monday through Thursday, Tuesday, two hours a day, about a sixteen dollar an hour rate, everyone that's interested. And they have the new assistant general coordinator and also a new transportation coordinator. And that's all I have.
Do you have information on that dishwasher schedule, would that be put a little to your high school student or?
No, it's uh Monday through Thursday, presumably at lunchtime, so, yeah. Because I don't believe they're open tasks.
Maybe a senior that.
Yeah, so they do have um opportunities for seniors to um work and you get. I don't know how many hours, but you get a thousand dollars off your taxes if you make this a certain percentage of hours. And um, I believe they've been asking people if they haven't found somebody that wants washers.
They, they had volunteers put them at the fire, so.
Yeah, I think they prefer to be freezers or whatever than washers.
He's washing his phone.
Well, there we go, Monday through Thursday, two hours a day.
Yeah, like a. Jamie, Jamie just blocked out on his schedule, says Zoom call.
Yeah.
Great.
How do you wash dishes with your guns?
No, when your boss looks at it, says, you wanna Zoom call? So we have a budget forecast yesterday, um.
Today.
Today, so, it's not like yesterday.
It was this morning.
It feels like a lifetime, it really, my goodness.
It really does.
Very. It's a long day today.
Ages away, awesome place. That important, but I'll, I'll say this, two, one, shows you why, why we love this town, the people who work here. Nancy and Jim, and Tom Rapp, they grew up in Cam. Uh, so everyone that was there, for us to sweat over some of these line items, like. Forty-six thousand, two hundred thousand dollars. The big picture is this, we're gonna get there. We're gonna, as of today, uh, we, we made some adjustments to some of the meal stacks and uh hotel tax adjustments up, so.
Right, but that would also have to pass, that, that would, wouldn't it?
No, this is just.
Our estimate, yeah.
Oh, our estimate.
It's just our estimates based on historically, so.
We weren't any based though.
Um, and yeah, we, I work with the schools to make sure that uh the town uh will recover. To ensure there's really big teamwork and really good partnership with them, I just wanna say that publicly, how great it was to work with them. To ensure that uh for this year, it looks like we're gonna be covering where we need to be on our budget, and it was, we're, we are razor thin. Like, right there.
We are razor thin.
Um, to make sure that we don't have to land one off, uh, where that, where we're at. Here, so that's where we sit today, things are looking okay, but uh just be prepared, people need to know that we are right there. A lot of people. So we'll get all those worksheets and things, I think.
It's the website, everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, um, just so everyone can make sure they see it. Good job, right there.
I heard the comments around to the home.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe it, and we're still, our estimates were. Uh, correspondence, they're giving you your.
We have a correspondence, I think, I'll just a couple of things, I think you, you already got copies up, there's one uh letter uh Jermaine to uh. One of the last items we talked about, which is the agriculture, so you can read that. It's in a buddy, a client that is quite some concern about it affecting them a little bit. And then we have another one that is about an A D U issue with uh zoning, which I'm sure zoning is taken, can, can look at and figure out for us. And that's all I got.
Email zoning or just email planning at Hong Kong?
Uh, I think she emailed.
I think that went to all.
Yeah, it went to all apartments.
Yeah. Well, it's a zoning issue, if there's, if there's this issue about zoning, it's gotta go with.
Yeah. So I. Maybe a consequence.
Yeah. You also had two pieces in your packet of correspondence, one with a thank you letter, another little patchwork on the free, which I think was about the fisherman.
Right, the fisherman's fest.
Yeah, that's close, yeah. Yeah, that was great, I forgot to mention, that was both the Fisherman's Fest and Hall Perstituent apples since we met last.
Yeah, that was nice.
Yeah. Really well attended, I think, you know, the vendors, the, you know, the public, everyone had a great time. The D P W deserves a shout-out, like, everything was super clean the next day, so, good job.
I hope they do it again, I also heard that many of the businesses just down Front Street and everything, some of them even doubled their business that day. So that Fisherman's Fest just brought everybody back to Hong Kong, great, yeah, pretty good, beautiful weather for.
Yeah, it did. I would.
Well, the same thing for the modeling, I said, during the.
They ran out of seafood, like.
During the postseason. Yeah, well, I mean, I felt like in the middle of the season.
Alright, um, for um, uh, meeting minutes.
Well, I don't have a paper to date.
I have.
Got a PowerPoint there.
Might as well.
It's a PowerPoint there.
Move, go prove, September twenty-third, full of coordinating.
Second, alright. Seven seconds, we go in favor.
Ayes.
Unanimous.
Motion to adjourn at eight forty-five, first.
Everybody, I have a second, I have a, I have a, I have a, I have a. Lieutenant Garmore, this one, around the. And it's Derek Aaron.
My computer didn't even.
Eighty-seven.